Good evening, and I would like to begin with a land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood, is occupied unceded seized territory of the Gabriel Leano Tonga and Gabriel Leano Kish peoples. And the time is 6:32 PM, and I would like to call this regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Hoopin-Garner, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is roll call. Secretary Gillig, may we please have roll call?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we have Commissioner Carvalho absent, and we also have Commissioner Jones absent, so the voting record will reflect that. Commissioner Solon.
Here.
Commissioner Maddox.
Present.
Commissioner Hoopin-Garner.
Present.
Commissioner Vice Chair Gregoire.
Here.
Chair Lombardi.
Present.
And we have a five-member court tonight.
Thank you. Item number five is approval of the minutes. These are the summary action. Oh, sorry. Approval of the agenda first, thank you.
I move approval of the agenda.
Motion by the Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mattos.
And the motion passes, noting five ayes approving the agenda as presented for May 15th, 2025.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the minutes. We are now there. Minutes dated May 1st, 2025. Are there any corrections from staff or from my colleagues?
I'll move approval. I will second.
Okay. Motion did by Commissioner Mattos, second from the Vice Chair.
And the motion passes, noting four ayes. Commissioner Carvalho and Commissioner Jones' voting will be no vote, or absent vote, and Chair Lombardi is abstaining from this vote, approving the minutes for May 1st, 2025, as presented.
Thank you. Item number seven is the Director's Report. I believe. Oh, oh my gosh, I'm skipping everything today. Item six is public comment. Do we have anyone here today?
Chair, we have no public comment.
Okay, and no one in Zoom?
No.
Okay, so now we can move on to item seven, Director's Report. Acting Director Alkire is here today, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Lombardi and Vice Chair Gregoire, members of the Commission. My name is Jennifer Alkire. I am the Assistant Director of Community Development, and I have a number of updates for you tonight. So at their last meeting on May 5th, the Council approved three sustainability-related items. They authorized staff to issue an RFP for a consultant to explore options for emissions control device requirements to improve local air quality. This likely wouldn't be in the zoning ordinance, so it probably won't be something that comes to you, but just for informational purposes. They received a presentation regarding equitable building performance standards, which relates to a proactive program to bring buildings into alignment with our climate action goals by making them more energy efficient. And the Council also heard an update to the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan implementation progress. These all represent significant amounts of work that will further the city's efforts to fight climate change, and the work is headed up by Senior Planner Christine Chen and Assistant Planner Emily Rotman and the LRP team. Also, at the same meeting, the Council passed a zone text amendment establishing a ministerial housing permit process. This item was heard by the Planning Commission over the spring. And as a reminder, it doesn't change any of the thresholds for review or standards of review in the West Hollywood code, but it institutes a framework for ministerial housing permits that are mandated by state law and could be enacted into local ordinances in the future. The effort was led by Senior Planner Tahira Ferris and Associate Planner Michelle Montenegro. And at the same meeting, the Council also directed staff separately in a separate item to explore raising the threshold for director-level review of housing projects, and also to, on a longer term, to explore making the same types of housing projects ministerial in the future. And these changes would require zone text amendments and would come back before the Planning Commission, before moving on to Council. And last but not least, and very exciting news, City of West Hollywood Metro K Line Extension First Last Mile Early Assessment Plan has been selected to receive an APLA LA Planning Award of Merit in the transportation category. And for non-planners among us who are listening, the APA LA is the local chapter of the American Planning Association, so this is very exciting. And the effort has been led by Senior Planner David Finn and the Long Range Planning Team. And I also just wanted to recognize that all of this work is very important, and it's being done under the leadership of Planning Manager Francisco Contreras to help the team work towards the city realizing its land use, housing, sustainability, and transportation goals. Thank you. Unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoopin-Garner.
Hi. Congratulations. I have a question, and I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I have gone on to the permit infomap for a number of times over the past number of weeks, and it's DOA. And it keeps saying, you know, it's being upgraded, but it's not working.
Okay.
And I was wondering what the status of that was, and there's a part two, but I'll start.
Sure. The best way to access that information is through our online portal, the permit portal. You don't have to have an account to log into the WeHo online portal for permits, and you can look up permits through that method. So it should link to the infomap link, but if that link isn't working, we'll go back and check and make sure it's correct.
Because I purposely didn't go to my saved link, and I went to weho.org and searched on permit map, and it took me to the exact same place.
Okay. I'll double-check that link. It should connect to a different place now, but if that's broken, I'll circle back.
Okay. Thank you. It came up because I got a call from a citizen who was frustrated. They had pulled permits, they had gotten remodeling plans, and they had gotten what they thought was all the required permits. And once they got their framing done, they were told they had to pull a separate permit for electrical and a separate permit for plumbing, which was never told to them when they walked in the first day. And they were very upset. And then when they came back and tried to make an appointment, they were told they had to go online to make the appointment. And they went online, and they couldn't make the appointment, and they spent an hour doing that, so they went back to City Hall, and they went to the desk, and the desk said, "You have to go online to do it." And he was like, and so finally someone put a post-it on someone's desk, and it was not an ideal process, let's just say. So I know you guys are working out all this new permit software, et cetera, but I just wanted to share that feedback, because it's clearly, you know, when we hear about struggles with the permitting process, I think this is definitely, you know, causing some burps.
Sure. And anytime you hear from someone that hasn't experienced like that or any other questions, you can always direct them to me, and I'm more than happy to help them work through the process.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is consent calendar. We have no items today, so that brings us to item nine, Public Hearing, Section 1, Project Subject to Housing Accountability Act. We have no items. So our first hearing of the evening, item 10A, Public Hearing, Section 2, Other Items That Require Public Hearing Under the Law. 10A is a Zone Text Amendment for Approval Process for Accessory Business Uses. And we'll begin with the staff report. This, I know, is noted as, okay, never mind, that's the next item, so we're good, we'll begin with a staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. My name is Paige Portwood, Associate Planner in the Long Range Planning Division. Joining me this evening is Francisco J. Contreras, Long Range Planning Manager. The item before you is a Zone Text Amendment allowing Greater Flexibility for Accessory Business Uses and Incidental Business Activities. The proposed Zone Text Amendment was brought to staff through a council directive following the adoption of the Small Business Initiative. The Small Business Initiative was published in collaboration with the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and aims to promote adaptability, creativity, diversity, and streamlining for businesses that currently operate or want to operate in West Hollywood. The Small Business Initiative offers suggestions on a variety of programs and policy changes that align with these objectives, one being through allowing greater flexibility of the code sections that staff is presenting to you this evening. To set the stage and to provide a broader perspective of this item, the overall intent of the Zone Text Amendment is to provide flexibility in the permitting process, to encourage creativity and economic vitality among local and small businesses in the City of West Hollywood. First, we would like to provide clarity in a real-world example on the terms that this Zone Text Amendment references. You will hear us refer to primary uses, accessory business uses, and incidental business activities throughout this presentation and during the discussion. A primary use is the business's main purpose or function based on the site's zoning designation. An accessory business use is a secondary or subordinate use that supports the primary business use on the property. Typically, these uses enhance the primary business's services, experience, or revenue generation. Incidental business activities are supplementary activities that support the functionality of a primary business without outweighing its main purpose. The differentiating factor between accessory business use and incidental business activities are that activities should not distinctly attract customers, but enhance the services or efficiency of the primary use. We came up with a hypothetical example here, seen on the screen, where an art gallery is a primary use with a smaller coffee shop café within the art gallery, and every Tuesday evening, the art gallery hosts a wine and painting workshop, which would be considered an incidental business activity. The Zone Text Amendment includes modifications to the regulations of both accessory business uses and incidental business activities. The first part of the Zone Text Amendment addresses accessory business uses. A few things to highlight about the current code is that it limits accessory business uses combined floor area not to exceed 1,200 square feet or 25% of the total floor area of the primary use. It also allows only minor external evidence of the accessory business uses, which could mean a smaller sign or a small visual indication of the business. Staff proposes amendments to this section, which would encourage a creative mix of uses and allow ABUs to be complementary to a primary use, allow flexibility of external evidence of an accessory business use, insofar as even external access to the accessory use, in addition to the entrance of the primary use. It would increase the combined floor area of an accessory business use to be less than 50% of the total floor area of the primary use, and allow accessory business uses that are permitted in the proposed designated commercial zoning districts to be permitted with the same as the primary uses. We also made amendments to the sections that regulate incidental business activities. One of the first things we noticed about the existing code was that it intertwined the regulations of accessory business uses and incidental business activities, so it was hard to decipher between the two. We've modified the section to address that and distinctly separate the two terms. Just to reiterate, incidental business activities are supplementary activities that support the functionality of a primary business without outweighing its main purpose. Incidental business activities are activities that should not distinctly attract customers, but enhance the services or efficiency of the primary use. Currently, they are limited to only twice weekly with an admin permit, and requires a CUP or MCUP if businesses would like to host these activities more frequently. Staff proposes adding a few incidental activities to the list, which you will see here on this slide, to name a few, featured food, beverage, or wine tastings, workshops, podcast studios, and film screenings. We propose to eliminate the CUP and MCUP requirement for incidental business activities based on their frequency. Rather, all incidental activities could be permitted through an administrative permit. This would save businesses up to approximately $10,000 and a savings of three months of Still prohibited activities include live amplified music and dancing, which we did refine the language slightly for added clarity. And we have added an ambient music definition to the municipal code. We reference existing definitions from neighboring cities such as Beverly Hills, Culver City, Santa Monica, to inform the framework of West Hollywood's new definition. You will see here it is defined as low-volume, non-intrusive background music, whether pre-recorded, performed by a DJ, or played live without amplification that is intended to create atmosphere and complement the primary business activity without becoming a focal point of attention. Ambient music must remain at a volume that does not disrupt conversation within the premises, not be audible beyond the property line, including outdoor patios or entrances, and comply with all applicable regulations, noise regulations, under Chapter 9.08, and any permitted hours of operation. Our amendments also include applicable regulations outside of this specific code section. We reference that ancillary cannabis uses and activities are still to be guided by Chapter 5.70 of the municipal code, and we reference that businesses must still comply with the requirements of business licenses, which are in Title V. In closing, we wanted to address a couple of things. Special event permits may still be required for businesses that desire to host activities that are only temporary in nature and do not meet the normal development or city-approved use standards. In this case, they might be activities outside of the incidental business activities allowed through an administrative permit. In other words, this Zone Text Amendment does allow greater flexibility of essentially pre-approved activities to be allowed on an ongoing and continuous basis, but that does not mean that this would include things like live music, dancing, or even event-specific components that businesses might wish to host, like a step and repeat, a one-time pop-up with celebrity and guests, an entire facade change for the weekend, just as a few examples of what we see with special event permits. A CUP and MCU process may still be desired by certain businesses that wish to have even greater flexibility on live music and entertainment activities on a regular basis at a higher intensity than this Zone Text Amendment allows. And finally, we did present to the Long Range Planning Subcommittee in January, and in that draft of our proposed Zone Text Amendment, we included a live DJ, potentially drag shows. After workshopping this final draft around to staff, we noted that there isn't an entertainment business license, and we didn't want this Zone Text Amendment to add to the permitting process, so we omitted those pieces, those incidental activities from the list. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any disclosures? No disclosures? Any clarification questions, or we could see if there's public comment? I don't know if we have any public, though.
We have public comment.
We do?
No.
Oh, we do not? Okay. Okay, yes. Commissioner Hoopin-Garner.
A couple things, just because I'm trying to wrap my head around the two different accessory business uses and the incidental business activities. And when I look at B, incidental business activities, 2, and then A through I are activities, but JK and L are spaces. It's a working area. It's a studio. It's a room. So, salud. So my question is, what's the distinction? When I look at a small theater room, now that looks like it's square footage, and it would apply to the accessory business use and the 50% floor space, et cetera. Does that make sense? I'm trying to understand the breakdown here and how these JK and L are different and not accessory business uses, because they're not really activities. I can see having a live podcast recording, that's an activity, but the studio is a place. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a great detail to point out. I think that we were intending on the activity and not necessarily, we got into the level of detail of the space, but yeah, we were focused on the activity.
Which, to me, again, you're right. I mean, that's the incidental business use, and it's an activity. If someone co-works at your cafe table, that's an activity.
Right.
As opposed to building a co-working space.
Agreed. Yeah.
So maybe you can look at JK and L and figure out how to tweak those to bring them in alignment with an activity. Related to that, then, back on A, accessory business uses, number 2, and the 50% floor area. My only concern here is that now you're talking about 50% of the business, it's not, we're now talking about almost two separate businesses, and then when you add on a 10% deviation that the Community Development Director can approve, now you're actually looking at potentially an accessory business use that is a greater component than the primary business use. So, just to me, there's a little bit of disconnect there in terms of just what's the balance that we're really looking for? And I understand wanting maximum flexibility, but at what point all of a sudden does our accessory business use become the primary business use de facto because this code allows for it to be more spaced than the original primary business use?
Yeah, we definitely considered that. We always were brought to We always were brought to the 50% because of streamlining. It's easier for our planners to delineate 50% rather than maybe a more so arbitrary number that splits square footage in kind of a more random amount. Additionally, we assume that perhaps maybe more than one accessory business use would want to utilize this code section because it does mention accessory uses. So, one primary business could have two accessory businesses not to exceed 50% of the total floor area.
Or 55, 56%, if the director decides.
Approves, yeah.
Okay. I just, it seems a little bit of a slippery slope when the accessory business uses are bigger than the primary business use. And now we get into this potential do-loop, and that could set up more problems that we don't anticipate. Finally, Development Standards 4. See, outside promoters. I think there's some grammar here. I don't know. "Incidental activities shall be organized and operated by part of the primary business use and shall not be sponsored or managed by an outside promoter." So my question is, what is by "part of the primary business use"? And then it follows, "Activities benefiting nonprofit organizations, however..." An activity may benefit a nonprofit organization. I think that "however" comma, that doesn't make any sense. And so I'm wondering what the intent here was. I think I get it, but I'm not sure the words get there.
I may have the answer for that if it gets us to it faster. I see you're looking at the redline text. I saw that as well. And I believe it's corrected in the resolution, and the sentence reads more clearly there. So that may be the discrepancy. So you may want to take a look at the resolution text and see if that feels okay to you.
Oh, so they didn't match? I stuck with the redline. Thank you.
I saw it too, so take a look there. And in fact, it's page 8.
8, yeah, okay. Okay, the second sentence looks like it's fixed. Thank you. You still have a little verbal on the first sentence, but yeah. Thank you.
Did you have other questions, too?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Solomon, I have some questions, too, but I'll let you go first. Oh, okay. Well, then, okay. I feel like there's a couple of maybe hypothetical things that I'd like to just ask about for my own clarity, since an example was just provided. So, when we talk about accessory business use, if I have that right, what would it mean, for example, I've gone to, in another city, in another state, a gym that had a coworking space, like a designated coworking space? So what would the differences be in terms of the process today if someone wanted to do that? And with these Zone Text Amendments, or would it be different? Other than, I know we have some area limitations, for example, that are being discussed, and that would obviously require a certain amount of area.
As far as the process goes, nothing that we have found would change of the process. We're just expanding the flexibility. We, yeah, the permitting process should remain the same. And we did want to caveat that the current code does allow accessory businesses, like the example you used. So this is just actually refining clarity, expanding the space, to put it...
Yeah, okay. So the main difference would be that it could be a larger portion of the space.
Correct.
And the process is maybe slightly streamlined. I guess another example I'm thinking of, I've seen this before, too. So let's say there's an Italian restaurant, and it would like to offer classes as well. Would that be an incidental business activity? And is that process allowable today, or is there something different?
Yes, that is a hypothetical example of an incidental business activity that would be allowed in today's existing code, up to twice weekly, and it would be allowed via an administrative permit. If they wanted to offer that class, say, every night or every night of the week, then that would elevate to a CUP or an MCU process in which the proposed Zone Text Amendment would allow for it just to be an admin permit.
Okay. I'll reserve my opinions for further discussion. There was also a note in the code, which I'm going to try to find now, about fees. And I believe that related to incidental business uses under 4D. 4C, actually. Admission charges. Is it C or is it D? It may have changed in the text. Oh, it's C. It's D over there.
It's C over here.
I believe it's D.
Apparently, it's D now. Either way, admission charges, to cover the topic. "No admission fees cover charges. Other payments shall be required," et cetera. So is that the intent? That if someone were to offer courses, that they can't charge a fee other than to cover their costs?
That is the intent.
In a restaurant, for example?
Correct.
Okay. Something maybe to think about?
And I would just add, Chair, that's actually something that we have currently in the code. It's not necessarily something that we're adding, but something for the Chair to consider.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking about it with the context of the changes that we're making that are being proposed today. Otherwise, there were some minor clarification items that I had. That was my last question. Do my colleagues have any other questions? Okay. Double check. There's no public comment? No. Should we move on to deliberation? Great. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Solomon?
Thank you for bringing this to us. Thanks for all the work that went into it. Knowing that the original intent behind clarifying these activities and uses is to promote and help our small businesses, I'm going to piggyback off of what the Chair was alluding to in 4D in the resolution. It's on page 8 of 11, with admission charges. I mean, I guess we all kind of go through this and play out hypotheticals in our head, but you had an example of an art gallery as a picture with a coffee shop as an accessory use, and then an activity as an incidental. I mean, for me, I can imagine a world where that same art gallery would want to have a documentary screening of, I don't know, Spanish Impressionism art. Some documentary, and they wanted to charge. They're a business. They wanted to charge tickets for people to come see, and this is an incidental activity. Yet the code, as it currently stands today and as it's being written here, would prevent them from doing so. I can understand... I guess there are plenty of examples that I can think of where the incidental activity, the cost of it is above and beyond just the materials cost, above and beyond just the pasta that the restaurant has for the cooking classes. And if it's to ultimately help the business, to promote the business, to bring people into their door, they may want to bring in, you know, a higher-profile incidental activity that would necessitate somebody paying $10 to have a ticket to go see a reading from a famous author out of their latest book. I just, I don't think that we should be in the business of regulating whether or not the business can charge people to walk into their store for that incidental activity. So that is the only thing that I would highlight and point out, is that I would strike the admission charges and give our businesses the freedom to charge people what they want to charge for the programming that they want to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Hoop and Gardner?
I mean, I 100% support this. I mean, I'm a management consultant. I've been about business my whole career and all about ways of making things better and easier and faster. And so I'm very much in support of this. I do think I pointed out a couple of little things that I think need tweaking to make it good code. I agree on the admission charges. The tricky needle to thread here is the overlap between admission charges and cover charges in a bar or something like that and, you know, a screening in an art gallery. Or, you know, I'm actually looking at bringing in a movie here into council chambers, and there's a fee to rent the movie in order to show it. And so we need to cover that, you know? So I think... But the interesting thing here is, under Development Standards, this is talking about incidental activities, not in an accessory business use. So this is where our definitions kind of cross again, okay? So let's say, let's do another hypothetical. Let's see. You have an art gallery with a café that's an accessory business use. And you can't charge admission to that café. It should be open to the public. But then the gallery wants to show a movie, and they want to charge for it because they had to pay for it. Now, that would be an admission fee related to the incidental use, not the café accessory business use, correct? So this is where it gets a little confusing. And I just, I'm concerned that our code is clear so that everybody who reads it understands it and can work with it and move forward and not get confused and potentially deterred from trying to do some of these interesting and creative things. So maybe staff can help us understand what the intent on the admission charges thing was, if there was something that we're missing?
The idea of keeping that in, we did also discuss this as well as the outside promoters piece of the code. But as far as the admission charges, we wanted to maintain that an incidental business activity does not supplant the primary use. So where their revenue generation is being funneled through the primary use's operation and not the incidental business activity.
I think I'm a little confused because if the art gallery is showing the movie, that's their primary use, is the art gallery. And they're showing a movie about dégâts. That's an incidental use to their primary business, but under this code, they couldn't charge admission or a viewing fee or a ticket fee? But if the accessory business... I'm sorry. The fact that we're having this conversation means that there's some cleanup needed, I think.
Yeah, I'd be curious what... If other colleagues have thoughts on that, or if there's more you want to add.
I don't have an answer. I think, and based on my experience in going through contracts and things like this, you've just got to go through scenarios and think of, you know, the what-ifs and howabouts. And if someone came with this, how would this code answer it? And do we want to encourage that or disincentivize it? You know, so that the code behaves according to what our goals are. And I think we all, we may, I don't want to put words in my colleague's mouth, but we all want to encourage these accessory business uses and incidental business uses, so...
I mean, I would just jump in, and sorry to do that, but I'd just jump in and say, I know, for example, a restaurant, how competitive it can be. You know, the cost of labor, the cost of food, and to make that all happen. And so there's other ways to generate revenue. I realize that whether you're offering a cooking class or a language class or something else, that you're kind of in a middle-ground area. But if they want to charge for it beyond covering their costs, I wouldn't see any reason why, you know... I feel like the market will self-solve on those things, right? If they're charging fees that are undesirable, that's probably not going to be a good business model, anyway.
Well, if you, I mean, speaking of someone who's done this math more than once, okay? When you start talking about costs, what are the costs? You want to have a cooking class at a restaurant at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it's only open in the evenings. Well, then you should be able to layer on the overhead portion of that, you know, space for that part of the day. You should be able to over-on, you know, the electricity and all of the other bits. Those are costs. They're not a hard cost for the pasta, as the Chair mentioned, but it's part of the cost, so... Who gets to determine, you know, what that pricing is, then, to say that this is incidental? Or, no, now you're charging $200 for a cooking class for five minutes, you know? Then we start getting into the fee police, and I don't think any of us want to do that.
I'd like to hear what staff has to say as a reasoning for why this exists.
I think back in the, or it exists from a long, a long time ago. I think when there was caution about having incidental business activities that kind of started to transform into maybe some nuisance activities. For example, all of a sudden, you were charging almost a fee to get into a restaurant when it might have otherwise not been permitted. I vaguely remember instances of this coming up for, like, I think it's restaurants or cafes. Maybe even a restaurant that wanted to be almost a
Members-only.
de facto nightclub in a way, where all of a sudden, it's like, oh, yeah, we're a restaurant, but we're charging people to get in. Whereas like, wait a minute, you actually can't do that. Even though you're having a special event, you're still a restaurant, and you can't be charging people to, you know, come in here to whatever, for that one dance party.
But that wouldn't be, because this is under, it says in particular, incidental activities.
Right, right, yeah. I'm talking about the history, the history about it. Yeah, so we did have a little caveat in there with regarding, you know, that you wouldn't be able to charge admission fees, cover charges, et cetera, except for fees to cover material costs as approved by the review authority. We could, you know, for example, just say to cover costs, we can just remove the material and as reviewed by the
Review Authority.
by the review authority and leave it at that. So we won't specify that it's just to cover materials, for example, but it can cover overhead or everything else. We wouldn't have to be super-specific about, you know, what it would charge. Or we can just strike the entire paragraph. Either one of those is an option.
And I see, striking material costs would definitely help, but it brings it back to, this week, we want to have a pasta class. Next week, we want to have a salmon roe class. And they're different costs. And so they've got to come back to the review authority for each set of costs?
I think Commissioner Hoop and Gardner, to Director Contreras's point... Manager Contreras, I always get that wrong. Manager Contreras's point. I think, you know, this was an existing provision, and granted, the staff's recommendation is to bifurcate a little more, but I would say it probably is an art, not a science. And I think Manager Contreras's point about maybe striking material costs provides the flexibility. I would love to go to a roe class, too. That sounds delicious. So I do think on the cost thing, you know, it might be something that, with a simple change, might preserve that flexibility for that kind of hypo.
Well, I guess my, there's two parts. Because this is as approved by the review authority. And this implies that each incidental activity would now have to be approved by the review authority. And I thought the idea was that you could sort of batch these ongoing incidental activities and not be constantly coming back to staff for an approval for each class.
Right. You still have to apply for an administrative permit, correct? So you have to have some semblance of an idea of what you want to do as an incidental activity, recurring, a recurring activity. So in effect, if you were just, you know, if somebody were to say, we're going to do classes, and we're going to charge X amount for each class, hey, that sounds reasonable. That would be okay, right? They wouldn't have to come necessarily in for each individual change of class as long as it would stay within the parameters of what was approved. That should be okay.
So if they came in with an approval and say, we want to do cooking classes, and the price will depend on the subject matter and the amount of time, and therefore, the price will range from $50 to $500, depending on what the content is, then that would be the permit that I can wrap my head around.
Right, that would be reviewed by the authority, right?
Okay. Because I just, I want to avoid them having to come back in every time they have a new class and it's like, oh, now we want to do caviar and it's going to be even more, so, you know?
The only thing they can't do is like, you know, they'd say, okay, we're going to do classes, this will be the range of prices, and then they decided to switch that up to wine tasting. We're like, whoa, 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 wait a minute, you came in for a permit for classes, not wine tasting. That's when we would actually then consider that to be something different.
I like the change that staff brought forward because it allows for the flexibility to be able to allow for this to do what it's intended to do, which is to allow for a local business to thrive and, you know, cover costs and, you know, appeal to members of the public that want to enjoy a great service while also ensuring the spirit of the original intent, which is to ensure that there's not any type of exclusionary abuse.
Yep. Okay, so moving along, I think, once again, I'm 100% in favor of this conceptually. I do feel strongly about correcting J, K, and L. And I think, you know, staff's recommendation by simply striking studios and you might have to tweak L a little bit more, but getting rid of the physical space concept of those three items and focus on the activity since it is under incidental business activities. So I'm looking to staff to, you know, give us some ideas on how that could be corrected. I'm still not in love with the 50%. I understand the concept and I definitely don't love the 10% bump on that because now we're into, you know, accessory business uses that are in excess of the primary business use. So I don't know if my colleagues have any opinions on that. I just, that's one of those, again, slippery soaps that I'm a little concerned about.
It is a good question. Are there any opinions on the amount of area that's being allocated in the code?
I guess I'm okay with increasing it, although I do appreciate the point that it becomes 60% if that discretion is exercised on the part of the director. You know, we could also say 40% with a 10% discretionary bump.
That's actually where my, my head was going, was 40%.
But again, I support, I support the flexibility we're trying to create here for businesses and I just, I don't want us to do anything that will hurt that flexibility, but, you know, if the commissioners are open to it, we could say 40% with a 10% discretionary bump.
I'd be amenable to that.
I mean, I understand the impetus and the thinking behind that, and I would, you know, be happy to go with the recommendation of the body, but just personally, I was perfectly fine with it as written. I mean, I think that when you look at it from an accessory standpoint, from a use standpoint, it provides flexibility for unique circumstances, gives room for creativity to be able to have, you know, the director's discretionary to go above 50%, but also 50% it allows for, you know, if there is an accessory use, if it's a coffee shop in an art gallery and it's 50/50, you have to think of it like that is an opportunity for them to split the rent in half and have two incredible small businesses that are able to afford a commercial rent in a very high commercial rent environment. So, I mean.
But let's be careful, it's still a single business.
Yeah, it's still a single business, but it's, but there's two uses that are generating profit.
I understand the two uses, but let's be very careful about the language because these are not two separate businesses.
But if you have two businesses within a property, it doesn't matter if they're separate businesses or not, if you have two revenue streams within a single site, you're able to generate more revenue that would cover the commercial rents, right?
Absolutely, but let's be clear about the language. A revenue stream is very different than a separate business because it's a separate business license, a different entity.
Okay.
So that's my, that's all I was concerned about.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Revenue stream, yes, 100%.
Thank you for that. So, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it as written personally.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say my entire goal and approach as I look at this is to give our businesses as much flexibility as possible to prosper, but also just to survive in this economy. It's a tough market, we don't want to see vacant storefronts. It's the same reason why I'm opposed to prohibiting them from being able to charge an admission price. So I would want to go with the more relaxed standard of 50% and I would also want to strike the D admission price.
Okay, thank you. You know, I looked at it both ways. I don't know if I have a super strong opinion. It seems like the change is an improvement and I'm all for business flexibility. I always worry about regulating and trying to anticipate something that, obviously we want to catch things that are perhaps not right or not desirable, but at the same time, there's a lot of scenarios we don't know about. Maybe there's a bike shop and there's some sort of activity they want to do and it requires a large amount of area for them to do that, I don't know. That's maybe an example that I don't even fully understand myself, but where someone may justify that they need a certain amount of space, but it's still very much in alignment with the business as a whole. So I think I was just not sure if I understood staff's reasoning behind how they got to 50% other than that it's simple math, so, but that being said, if it were 50% and it somehow did slide above and it was justified, there is some level of review process and, you know, even though it may be larger area-wise, I don't know if that's necessarily something that's to be an issue if we're trying to allow these businesses to have some flexibility. So I'm okay with it, but I did think we should discuss it.
I'm perfectly fine leaving it as is. I think the spirit of this whole thing was to allow for businesses to have the opportunity to diversify revenue streams.
Despite my suggestion, I'm okay with the 50%.
Okay. It seems like no one really wants to keep the fee there, or if so, it would be modified.
I like the staff approach to the modify, the modification because it allows for maximum flexibility while also ensuring there's a way to ensure that there's not exclusionary or predatory practices that are occurring as a result of charging to enter a business use.
May I ask a question? I missed some of this from the last meeting, so it could be for my colleagues or staff. With the zone tax amendment that was here at the last meeting with electric vehicle sites, I know that there were areas involved with that, does this have ramifications or how does that get handled or would that be updated hand in hand with this or did those numbers go away?
Do we want to talk about the Tesla restaurant and what's incidental and what's accessory?
Not really.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't want to rehash anything either, I just want to make sure we're thinking about context to other ZTA's. That was all I wanted to ask.
You brought up something that was actually in the, very much in the back of my mind about how this, what's the nexus of this with that, we had sites and stations and site stations and all the
The UVA.
All the bits and, you know, maybe staff could go back and make sure there's not a crash in on that language and this language because I think, I don't think we can tackle it today. I think it'll be too complex, but I think I would encourage staff definitely to go back and review the EV language that you're about to bring to council in the context of this and make sure that there's not an unintended consequence slash mashup on these ancillary, incidental, accessory, site stations. And I think that to legal really gets to the definitions. We've just got to be crispy clean on the definitions.
I'm going to ask anyway, but it's probably something that's being looked at at staff level, you know, information or direct, any sort of direction or review from a previous zone tax amendment versus this one that's more overarching and may overlap.
Yeah, and all of the regulations are meant to be complimentary. So I think for the, you know, the previous or the EV site discussion, that was really discussing primary uses, correct? So I think in this instance, we're talking about accessory business uses, which is slightly different. But yeah, we, depending on whether or not that gets approved by council, we'll take a look at it and make sure that there's no inconsistencies when this does get to council for review.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd happy to make a motion. Oops.
So that was such a close one.
Can I ask really quickly on the admission pricing thing? It sounded like I wanted to strike, you all wanted to modify, I don't know about in the middle of the dais, if y'all had an opinion one way or the other.
We could do a straw poll.
I wanted to go with the staff recommendation.
I'm for modifying.
The staff recommendations on the modification, yes.
I'm for striking entirely.
I'm okay to modify.
I'm okay with the modification.
Okay, to lose.
Commissioner Hoopengartner, do you want to?
Okay, so my motion is to approve staff's recommendation with the following changes. On page seven of the resolution B to I, J, K. Francisco, do you have your recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
So for I, we would revise that to say co-working in designated remote working areas, including workstations, meeting rooms and wifi access within cafes or restaurants. So we would strike spaces or, and we would just say co-working in, so it's actually an activity.
What about meeting rooms? Because it's within cafes and restaurants.
Designated remote working areas, including work, co-working in designated remote working areas, including workstations and wifi access.
Because a restaurant technically doesn't have a meeting room, they might have a private room.
Seven of all.
I think about like Hugo's Cafe, they have that private room in the back.
I think Commissioner Hoopengartner, I do think it's an inclusive definition because it includes workstations, meeting rooms and wifi access. I do think I, J, and K all have kind of examples within a larger inclusive definition.
Okay, so, all right.
And then for J, I would recommend
Strike.
live podcast recording sessions hosted within cafes, restaurants or bars, allowing audience participation, et cetera, et cetera. So we would just strike out studios and include sessions hosted.
Excellent.
And then for K, we would actually start by saying film screenings and discussions within small theater-style areas inside cafes, restaurants or retail spaces.
Excellent.
Okay.
Now we have activities.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so those changes to I, J and K, did you have a correction for 4C on the first sentence, operated by the primary business use? Because it's organized and operated by the primary business and not sponsored by, sponsored or managed by an outside promoter. Because what if it's, back to Commissioner Matos's point, we've got a business owner, the owner of the business, who owns the primary business and owns the accessory business and owns the incidental businesses. That's all the same owner.
Commissioner Hoopengartner, could it be solved by just deleting the word use?
Yes.
So it is just, okay, all right, so incidental for the record, so 4C, outside promoters, incidental activity shall be organized and operated by the primary business and shall not be sponsored or managed. And so the word, we're striking the word use after business, after primary business.
Perfect, that's exactly what I was referring to. Thank you. Admission charges, we're going to strike the word material.
Yeah, and I would recommend also striking within the parentheses, for example, workshop supplies, we'll just say, just to cover costs.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, so moved.
I will second that.
Okay, seconded by the vice chair.
Who was the second?
Seconded by Vice Chair Gregoire. Unless there's any further discussion, we can call the vote.
And the motion passes, noting five I's. Commissioner Carvalho, Commissioner Jones voting will be absent on this vote, approving resolution number PC 25-1604. There is no appeal process, this is a recommendation going forward to the city council.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item 11, new business, we have one item. This is the general plan and housing element annual progress reports for calendar year 2024. And I believe staff has a report today, and this is primarily a receive and file, but if there are questions, we can ask those and if for any reason there is a desire to have a discussion, we can talk about that after the staff report as well. We'll give a minute for the presentation to get up and then we can begin. Thank you.
My name is Tahira Ferris with the Long Range Planning Division of the Community Development Department, joined by Long Range Planning Manager Francisco Contreras. Tonight, I'll be giving a presentation on our general plan annual progress report. So the general plan annual progress report is a state mandated requirement which monitors the city's progress on implementing the West Hollywood General Plan 2035, which includes the six-cycle housing element. Government Code Section 65400 requires that the annual progress report be presented to the local jurisdiction's legislative body prior to submitting the report to the state by April 1st of each year. The annual progress report was presented to city council on March 17th and subsequently was submitted to the state on March 21st. And so tonight's presentation is purely an update to the commission. So the city's general plan, noted as general plan 2035, was adopted in 2011 with 10 guiding principles. And it's the basis for decision-making, funding priorities and work programs to establish the city's vision for managing its physical, social and economic resources. The general plan has had periodic modifications, updates to various elements since its adoption through an annual review process as well as comprehensive updates and targeted map and text amendments to ensure the plan's consistency represents the priorities and values of the city. The most recent update was to the safety and noise element in which the city updated its local hazard mitigation plan in October of 2024. The general plan annual progress report for APR monitors the city's progress in implementing the general plan by reporting on the status of the prior calendar year. And so the report also offers transparency to West Hollywood residents and stakeholders regarding the services and activities being undertaken by the city to best serve the community and pursue the goals of the general plan. So this is a list of some major general plan implementation activities that took place in 2024. So just for reference, some funding as well as advocacy for our Metro Kaline extension, activity to reduce speed limits within the city in line with our Vision Zero goals, as well as various zone text amendments. And the implementation chapter of the general plan has a series of actions that carry out specific policies and the progress report provides updates to the city's activities and highlights milestones. There are a total of 172 programs in the general plan and 91% of those have had some action taken, which is defined as either ongoing activity, underway, pending or completed. The programs have timelines that vary from short-term of one to two years to long-term of five-plus years to ongoing. And this slide and also the one on the next screen that I'll pull up show just a list of activity, of action item categories and what stage the action items are in and the total number of general plan actions taken. So there's our total there. And so moving on to the housing element, as part of the general plan annual progress report, the city Report, the city is also required to submit an annual progress report on the city's housing element programs and progress towards meeting its RENA. The state mandated housing element APR includes units developed in the previous year that go toward meeting the city's RENA, and a status update on programs that address the city's housing goals. West Hollywood's share of regional housing needs during the six-cycle housing element is identified as 3,933 units. This is a breakdown of the RENA by income category, and again, our RENA for this planning period is nearly 4,000 units. About 62% of our RENA is dedicated for affordable units at either low, very low, or moderate income ranges. And our housing element programs also aim to address the needs of all members of the community, but also have an emphasis on affordable housing for households earning at or below the area median income. So taking a look at the data from calendar year 2024, the state uses the issuance of building permits to track progress towards the RENA, and in 2024, we saw a total of building permits issued for 169 units. 60% of those were for affordable units. However, our total progress towards our RENA from the beginning of the housing element cycle in October of 2021 is just a total of 484 units. And in total, just 25% of those so far have been affordable. We also took a look at some neighboring jurisdictions to see where we fall with our RENA in comparison to other similar jurisdictions around us or within the LA region. We looked at HCD's dashboard that tracks this. Their dashboard is updated after all the APRs are submitted, so we looked at data through 2023 in this case, and we see that we are pretty much on par with our neighboring jurisdictions as far as the progress that we've made so far. In addition to the city's RENA progress, the APR reports on 31 implementation programs of the city's housing element. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of the key programs that include updating some of the city's ordinances to facilitate seismic retrofitting, addressing inclusionary housing requirements, and rent stabilization, as well as general plan amendments and zone text amendments to increase housing production and incentives for developing housing. We'll also be looking at ways to preserve publicly assisted housing, create a community land trust to acquire and rehabilitate existing small family, small multifamily buildings, and monitor available funding at the federal, state, and local level for rehab efforts, as well as continuing to provide technical assistance to owners of historic resources as part of the implementation of the Mills Act. To highlight one accomplishment, the city in February of 2024 received a pro-housing designation from HCD, which enables staff to pursue grant funding as part of the pro-housing incentive program. Funds can be used to implement, implement and accelerate housing production with access to $9.5 million of state investment from the Building Homes and Jobs Trust Fund for jurisdictions that receive this designation. The city was then awarded $750,000 as part of this grant program to offset costs of the Holloway Project, which is a transitional housing facility with supportive services. And then the city is currently being reviewed for an additional $750,000 grant to contribute to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then highlighting some key housing activities that are currently underway, the city is working to update its inclusionary housing ordinance in alignment with state density bonus law. We're also studying whether we need to update our mixed-use policies with the goal of encouraging more affordable housing. And we've recently launched our zoning improvement for housing program, otherwise known as ZIP, which addresses a number of our housing element objectives, and we'll be looking at ways to remove barriers to housing production and incentivize more housing, and look at developing transit-oriented development programs. And then finally, the general plan APR also includes a snapshot of the city's progress towards the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, known as WEHO Climate Action, which was adopted in 2021. And this plan outlines the city's intended path to achieve carbon neutrality by 2035 and adapt to the impacts of a changing climate while centering equity and quality of life outcomes in the West Hollywood community. And that concludes my presentation, and happy to take any questions you might have.
Do my colleagues have any questions? Commissioner Solomon?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I, you know, I guess we have a stated goal of adding 4,000 housing units during this housing element cycle, and we're obviously falling well short of that, as are others. In my mind, you know, we can kind of wax poetic about streamlining and making housing easier and cheaper to build, but that doesn't really matter if it's not legal to build it. So my question is, do we at all track our zoned capacity in any sort of way? If you built out all of our parcels to the height of what our current zoning ordinance allows for, you can also throw in the variable about whether or not state density bonus laws might apply to that, different scenarios, but do we track how much you could build currently in West Hollywood under our current zoning ordinance?
So I believe the housing element process took some of that into consideration when it identified the suitable sites. So in coming up with suitable sites, that, I think that was part of the process. However, there may be, as you pointed out, barriers in the zoning code that are actually not allowing certain sites to reach their full potential. That is something that our zoning improvement program is actually currently looking at, so that'll be, there'll be more to come on that soon. That study is underway currently, actually, to see what is the current potential with our existing standards, and then how can we either remove certain barriers or provide different incentives that could change that.
Yeah, and I know it's a larger conversation that goes along, goes hand-in-hand with the ZIP process, but, you know, as I look at our built environment as it exists today, and then if you, in your mind, overlay the current zoning map on that, we've clearly downzoned a few times in the history of our cityhood, something that's not legal for us to do today. But like, there has clearly been an effort historically in the past 40 years where we have reduced our zoned capacity in the city. So I guess a comment as we go forward through this, through ZIP, to me, it would be important to know what's the maximum that we could do if there were no other barriers to implementation? And historically, this is harder research to do, but how have those numbers shifted over time? The second question, I wanted to ask this in the last one, the second question is about inclusionary zoning in the way in which RENA classifies and qualifies the different income stratifications from VLI up to moderate income. To me, it's, I mean, it's an unfunded mandate, right? It is, the state is requiring us to, to produce this particular type of housing that only a certain income level can qualify for, and that then has to get subsidized. It gets subsidized by the market, it gets subsidized by the developer, and then when the tenants come in, it gets subsidized by them and their, and their rate. If we instead of, if we thought about this differently, and we didn't think about inclusionary zoning as some, a cost that we are passing along to the developer and then to the future tenants, but instead we saw, we thought of it as a service that we provide, let's say, we had a local housing voucher program where the builder could build everything at market rate, we have a master leasing agreement with a builder where we reserve certain, certain units for certain income levels, and we give vouchers then locally that would follow the same sort of income stratifications as VLI, as the percentage of area median income. Would RENA say that we only produce 100% market-rate housing, even though we've, we've built, we've built a toolkit locally to be able to accomplish the same intent of this whole thing? And you don't have to know, it's a hypothetical, I understand if you don't know the answer off the top of your head, but it, it feels like we're a little limited in our ability to be able to provide the types of housing at different income levels that RENA calls for if we are being forced to ask the market to subsidize, instead of us being able to offer it as a social service.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoopengartner.
So just a couple of clarifications. For those of us who went through the general plan process in 2011, we did upzone a lot of properties, and in fact, we added the mixed-use bonus. And then what happened is that the state came through and they said, oh, nobody else did that, we're going to put through all these, these additional bonuses, so West Hollywood's actually done double bonuses. So, so mixed-use bonuses plus the 10-foot-
There are times where we have downzoned certain streets, though.
Very limited, and certainly not through the general plan process. But I think it's important to make clear that we've been ahead of this curve all along, and we've been very forward on it. And, but to that point, the thing that I see missing from this whole conversation is the, the point of actually providing housing, not just building it, providing it. And we've got an 11% vacancy rate, we've got close to 3,000 units that are vacant in the city. And, and I guess, I don't, I know it's not a requirement under the, the, the housing element, it's not a requirement under the reporting, but to me, that's a huge, huge chunk of housing that ideally could count towards our RENA numbers because it's vacant. But, you know, I don't, this is more of a rhetorical question, you, you don't have the ability to answer this because it's not something that you guys have any control over, but it just seems that this process should address that, those vacancies, and bringing them to the market, giving, making them available. And to Commissioner Solomon's point, okay, using an 8A voucher program or something to somehow get those units back and available to make them available, you know? But there, there, there's lots of reasons why they're not on the market, or they're being Airbnb'd and all kinds of other things, but we've got a huge inventory that's not, not available to people who want housing in this town.
Commissioner Hoopengartner, do you mind if I ask, I've, I've heard you say that 11% number before, I've also heard 5% and 6% thrown around, where do you, where do you get the, your numbers from?
We've got it from different places, but I think the city has actually got an inventory that they're working on. I know it was an item from council, council member Meister that, where they're inventorying all of the, of the rental units.
There's a, there's a website where you register, but-
I mean, I'm looking on like ChatGPT, but 6.6% is what comes up here, but I also see a number at 12. Be nice if we did know, if we did have a number that we could rely upon.
It's somewhere between 1,500 and 3,000 units, by either measure.
I think that tight housing markets are considered at around 5% to 6%. I mean, when you move out of a place and move into a place, there's a period of time where both of those are vacant, you, you don't get to 100%.
You never get to 100%, but to have, in, in our, our community, we, we can go into this, but, you know, 11% is a pretty high vacancy rate, you know, 3,000 units, that's a lot of, you know, turnover. But in any case, my only other comment is, in the actual document, there were a lot of, I think Excel wrapping issues, and so a lot of the document couldn't be read. So, and I know it's already been submitted to the HCD, and council's already approved it, et cetera, et cetera, but just going forward, both the top and the bottom in my PDF were all cut off.
It gets submitted, so this is unfortunately, the state gives us the template, and we cannot modify it. You can't make any changes, it's locked. So when it gets submitted to the state, it's actually an Excel file, so they prefer to see it that way.
Okay, so you just can't print it? Which is not-
Yeah, it's an enormous document.
Too handy for those who actually want to read it.
Yeah. But it's online, too.
The spreadsheet?
Well, so HCD uploads the numbers online.
Well, I was looking at the actual, all the comments sections, you couldn't read them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because they had a top wrap and a bottom wrap, and they were all cut off.
It may have been the way it was printed.
Yeah, because the, the printed PDF, if you look at the, in the back pages, all of the individual elements, there, if you look, they're, they're spreading into the top and the bottom of the box, the sentences are cut off.
That didn't happen for me, but it might just be a printing issue.
Okay, yeah. Those are my comments.
Okay. Yes, I've had to do forms before that are intentionally illegible when you print them, and it's a funny request when I've received those. But hopefully the data's available one way or another. I, I just want to note, some numbers were put out on housing and how much is vacant in the city, I don't know if any of that's actual, you know, fact right now. So I hope we're not quoting those numbers, you know, staff could come back at some point and let us know what they believe the numbers to be. And I'm not an expert in any of this, but I, I do get the impression there needs to be a certain amount of vacancy, because if you want to move within the markets, if your income changes up or down, et cetera, it's, I would think of it as like Tetris, if there's no space to move, then everyone gets stuck and no one's moving around. So I do think there needs to be a certain amount of vacancy, so I don't know if we're at an alarming level or not, I would be curious if we are, but I, I would be nervous if we're sitting at 100% capacity for sure, more nervous than if we were 15% vacant. So just wanted to put that out there. And other than that, I did, I did have a question, and it's okay if there isn't an answer today, more curiosity for me. I recall, and this was some years ago now, when we were going through the RENA allocations, obviously there's a lot of sites being designated, and, you know, what happens if everything's developed versus just proving that it could be developed into housing is a separate thing, without getting into all the details of that. My question is, assuming that we stay on track as we are, which is a little bit sad in terms of the amount of housing that's being built, what does it mean for the next housing cycle if the same sites are listed again? Does that go to a ministerial process?
Yeah, so we did look into this, and that, it is not an automatic ministerial process. So there's two references, one is to vacant sites and one is to non-vacant, so in the city, it's typically going to be a non-vacant site. For non-vacant sites, if they are used into housing cycles, it essentially says that you can't count it towards the low income unless the developer is going to, unless you allow for, or have to rezone to allow for a housing project by right, and then the project has to provide at least 20% low income. So it would be a choice, essentially, if we wanted to include it again, then we would need to make sure that we were allowing for development by right on that parcel.
So the answer is yes.
If we wanted to count it towards low income. So there's sort of, there's like multiple pieces to it, it's not automatic, essentially.
So, so other, so you could list, so if you wanted to count it toward low income, then it would fall into a by-rate process? Otherwise, it would be market rate site? And you would not have that by-rate requirement?
Yes, if we weren't counting it towards low income.
But then we would potentially get pinched, given that there's only so many sites, go back to the Tetris thing again, how many lots are there that you can designate to that? Okay, so it's, I guess it's a nuanced answer.
Yeah.
It's somewhere in between. That's the only other question I had. Okay. Commissioner Matos?
Thank you. I just had a quick, couple clarity questions, just for my knowledge, because I care about this. I'm looking at page six, this is the building permits issued, then the number of units This is the building permits issued, then the number of units being 44, and then there's the number of units that had certificates of occupancy issued. When the state's looking at our progress towards RENA, meeting the RENA goals of 3,933, are they going to be going off of these units that have actually been built?
No.
Or are they going to go off of the permits that have been issued?
They used issued permits as how they track progress towards RENA.
And then my next question is, the 364 that actually had certificates of occupancy that were issued, those presumably were from previous years where they actually received the approvals to build. Is that accurate?
Are you looking at the staff report or the actual housing element report?
I'm actually looking at the, what am I looking at? The staff report, I'm looking at the charts.
That says building permits final?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Page six.
Yeah. So yeah, so when, when a building permit gets final, it could be something that had gone through the entire entitlement process and permitting process, starting a couple years back, and then finally got it, yeah.
So those 484 permits that we issued last year, we would start to see them actually come into that category of being certificate of occupancy issued in subsequent years?
Correct, yeah, there's a lag time, yeah.
Okay, so the delta between them, yeah, it's expected. Okay, just wanted to just get some clarity around those, those progress numbers. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Great, thank you. Well, I think so. Unfinished business, no items, excluded, oh, do we have public comment? I should not have assumed, no one? Okay, thank you. No, it's good, thank you for keeping me in check. There could be someone out there. I, I actually wish we had at least one public comment today. Unfinished business, no items, 13 excluded consent calendar, no items, 14 items from staff, planning managers update.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to provide the commission with an update on upcoming meetings. We have a couple of very packed agendas coming up. June 5th, the Old Standard Hotel is coming for a conditional use permit amendment, so you'll see that before you on June 5th. We also have the Shell gas station at 8020 Santa Monica Boulevard that is requesting a renovation of, of the gas station. June 19th, the meeting is canceled due to the Juneteenth holiday. The July 3rd Planning Commission meeting is also canceled because of the July 4th holiday. So then we're back in here, July 17th, where we have several items. We have a zone text amendment for emergency specialized housing. We have another zone text amendment for commercial to residential conversions. There is a three-story mixed-use building at 401 through 409 North Robertson. There is also an appeal for 8451 Melrose Avenue. And a couple more items for July 17th, subdivision at 1139 Detroit Street, and a CUP for a restaurant, bar, nightclub at 9255 Sunset Boulevard. Seems like that's going to take us about two days to get through, so we'll work on that agenda for you. The other thing that's important, that date, is the election of the chair and the vice chair. So that will happen.
What date is that?
July 17th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all that's going to be on the 17th?
Allegedly.
Yeah, there's no way we're.
I mean, we've seen long lists like this before, sometimes things.
Right. That's, that's what we have in the books at the moment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
And then August 7th, we will be having the chair making the appointments to the subcommittees, so that will be starting August, August 7th. And then the only other thing on August 7th that we have on the docket at the moment is 9200 Sunset Boulevard billboard at the old Luckman Plaza.
Sorry, which number was that?
At 9200 Sunset.
Okay, thank you.
So Boa Soho House, the office building there.
So we, we only have one meeting in July?
That's correct.
And one meeting in June?
Yeah, due to the holidays.
Got it. Okay, just want to make sure I'm not, hey, I'm good with it, I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding it.
We'll potentially make up for it later.
Yeah.
One meeting in July.
One meeting in June, one meeting in July, okay.
Okay, so for design review, subcommittee, nothing, May 22nd, but there is an item on June 12th, which is for the project at 1,000 North La Brea, that's the mixers project at 1,000 North La Brea.
June 12th.
That's June 12th.
For the Sunset Arts and Advertising.
Is that going to SASE or to Design Review?
That says Design Review.
Oh, Design Review, oh, cool. Then I don't have to do that, great.
And then, instead of the Design Review Subcommittee on June 26th, we're actually having a SASE meeting on June 26th, and that is to review the billboard at 9101 Sunset, which is the Gil Turner's Fine Wine and Spirits, northwest corner of Sunset and Doheny, so that, that's June 26th.
At, at what time?
Oh, because of the construction.
6:00 PM. It's a back to the regular time of 6:00 PM.
Back to the regular time?
Yeah, for both Design Review and Sunset Arts.
Okay, 6:00 PM, the 26th.
But in the library?
In the community room, library.
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, for Long Range Planning Project Subcommittee, not meeting, not meeting on June 19th, of course, but on July 17th, we are reviewing a zone text amendment for state mandated amendments to our parking regulations. So this is in addition to AB 2097, these are additional parking amendments. And that, it's a wrap, thank you.
Take your vitamins.
Long range on the 17th at 5:30.
Correct.
Perfect.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. I already turned the page, item 15. Yes, item 15, public comment. We have anyone now for general public comment?
Chair, I'm sorry, we have no public comments.
Okay. Item 16, items from commissioners. Anyone? Okay, well, I'll be brief. I just want to thank Vice Chair Guiguar for leading the last meeting. It looked like it went smoothly, much appreciated. And then, I don't have any speech or anything performed, I, I like to hope or think that I'll be back here for the next meeting, so we will see. But thank you, everyone, for a productive meeting, and maybe we'll get some public here next time. If there's no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting. And the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be on Thursday, June 5th, 2025, 6:30 PM, here at Council Chambers. Thank you.